Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the order. The School Board of the City Original Meeting for Monday, January 4th, 2016. At this time, would the clerk please do a roll call?
Before I call the roll, is there anyone here who needs interpreter services?
If you have anyone who needs an interpreter in Spanish, please, please, move forward.
Will the board members who are present please respond, Mr. Sternavant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Born?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Present.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkett? Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
You have Korn, Mr. Superintendent, and we've also been joined by our student, Ahmed Woodson.
Hello.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to go ahead and take this opportunity to introduce Ahmed Woodson. Ahmed's an outstanding student with a current interest in aerospace engineering and international business. He's currently in his third, his tenth, uh, past three years at Thompson Jefferson High School. Is expected to graduate this June. At current time, Ahmed has a GPA of 4.6. Ahmed's resume is very, very long, so I'm gonna hit highlights, so no disrespect to him if you wonder why. Our relevant high school studies, he's honors physics, AP statistics, astronomy, dual enrollment, digital electronics, advanced architectural drawing and design, which is AutoCAD, inventory driven, AP English Language and Composition, econ and personal finance, US and Virginia history. I share that with you because who says you can't get a good course selection and quality education? Some of the honors and awards and accomplishments, and again, I mean, no disrespect for you, but I can't read them all. Technology Student Association, uh, which is TSA, uh, member since 2012. Certified user in engineering software since 2012. Received the Director's Award, or Director's Award Student of the Year in 2013 for math, science, investigators, top research at University of Richmond. National Technical Honors Society was inducted on February 2014. Is recipient and participant in the H.O.R.U. leadership ambassador program in 2014. And an outstanding track and field athlete and presently runs cross-country. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Ahmed Woodson.
Uh, before we go to the next item, as the record reflect, we've been joined by Mrs. Taylor and Mrs. Pinkett. Also, there is one amendment, item 1.04. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a clerk, agent, and deputy agent, we need to add to, um, recommendation for authorization to attend meetings and sign in the absence of the superintendent. So is there a motion to amend? We will adopt after the election of officers. So the next item is 1.03, election of officers chairman and vice chair.
School boards are required to hold an organizational meeting annually, in this case, it's January for us. At an organizational meeting, the board will establish a regular meeting schedule for the following year. Elect one of its members as chairman and in Richmond, also a vice chairman. Approve the designation of the superintendent to attend meetings of the school board in case of superintendent's absence when they're busy to attend. And appoint upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a clerk of the school board, in Richmond's case, a deputy clerk. In addition, the board may elect one of its members as vice chairman, as I mentioned, and a deputy clerk. At this time, I will open the floor for the process of electing a chair. And Mr. Coleman, if requested prior to Mrs. Taylor, to be recognized.
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Jeffrey Born for second.
Any additions? The nomination. Ms. Taylor?
I'm good. If the term, not the term, please explain to me how the process nominated, how sound yourself or what you want to say.
Someone would have to second the nomination. So there's nothing that would preclude anyone from nominating themselves. Um, that's not certainly a preferred method, but it's not prohibitive.
I would like to nominate myself for chair.
Second.
Do you have a current nomination for Mr. Born, a nomination for second for Mrs. Taylor, any other nominations? Final call for any other nominations. Now, clerk.
The first nomination, uh, was made by, motion and nomination was made by Mr. Coleman, secondly by Mr. Sternavant for Mr. Born as chairman of the board. Mr. Sternavant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkett?
Present.
Mrs. Larson? Yes. Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven, yay, one day, one extension.
Mr. Born, you need to take the seat and then work your mind through the rest of the process. First, uh, I know Ms. Taylor has a question, but, um, I just wanna thank the school board for, uh, their vote of confidence and the nobility to do this yet again. And it's my hope and expectation that we can move forward, uh, and continue the progress that we have sustained already. So with that, Ms. Taylor, you have a question?
Um, in the interest of the two-year 2016, and I have been thinking before, coming on through collectively for the last three years, um, I thought it may be a kind gesture to possibly have involving vice chair. Um, as far as state law, uh, as it relates to state law, Virginia is only required to have a chairman and not to be a vice chair. And, um, our colleague, Chairman Born, um, has a great deal of responsibilities to do in the day in, day out. And I thought it would be, uh, a nice gesture for the remainder of the board members to kinda alternate by the position of vice chair, so we can go in and sit in the agenda meetings, we'll be able to have access to information that we wouldn't normally have as individual board members. And it would allow us the flexibility for those of us who have a schedule that will make allowances for such a position, to be able to facilitate and accommodate. So, uh, in lieu of a vote, I would like to get the consensus from all of my colleagues to see if there is any interest in rotating the vice chairmanship so that we can all have an opportunity and leadership during this last year of our term.
Uh, there's not, I'm sorry, there's not consensus to, uh, rotate the chair, so, uh, vice chair, I wish there was. Or it might at some point. So now move on. We're gonna blame the head, not the heart, but, uh, Dr. Bennett just reminded me that, uh, he forgot to recognize the principal, who is here with our student, uh, board member, Mr. Thompson from TJ. So if you would stand, please. Next item on the agenda, now clerk.
The next item is, uh, elect a vice chair.
We will now recognize nominations for vice chair. Ms., uh, Mrs. Larson.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Donald Coleman for vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? Ms. Taylor?
I would like to nominate myself for vice chair.
Second.
Second. Any other nominations? Does anyone else desire to put a nomination for? Final call for nominations for vice chair. Nominations are closed, now clerk.
The nomination for vice chair was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Harris Mohammed for Mr. Coleman as vice chair, Mr. Sternavant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkett?
Present.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion is a seven and one day, one extension. The next item on the agenda is upon the recommendation of the superintendent.
I have space now.
What's the next item on the agenda, now clerk?
The next item is to approve upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Oh, amend the agenda. To approve, um, under the recommendation of the superintendent, authorization to sign and attend meetings in the absence of the superintendent. And the motion for a motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Sternavant, seconded by Mrs. Gray. On the second.
Now clerk.
I.
They opposed, they abstained. The amendment agenda is divorced.
So the next item is 1.04, to approve upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a clerk, agent, deputy agent, and to authorize someone to attend and sign, uh, in the absence of the superintendent.
Mr. Chairman and board members, at this time, I'd like to recommend for the position of clerk, uh, Ms. Angela Lewis for, uh, the agent, Mr. Ralph Westbay, deputy agent, Betsy Drury, to represent superintendent in his absence and sign in the absence of his absence. Two people that we've done in the past, first being, uh, Ms. Andrea King as associate superintendent, and then, uh, Mr. Ralph, Ralph Westbay, assistant superintendent for financial service. Sternavant, I move the superintendent's role to be.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Sternavant to approve the superintendent's recommendation and was seconded by Mrs. Harris Mohammed uh, for Angela Lewis as clerk, Ralph Westbay as agent, Betsy Drury as deputy agent, and to sign and attend meetings in superintendent's absence, Andrea King and Ralph Westbay. Mr. Sternavant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
And Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, yes. The next item is to approve the deputy clerk.
Are you looking for a motion?
As a recommendation. Okay, I'll take, I'll take a motion for it. Mr. Sternavant?
I move that we remain with our current deputy clerk.
Second.
Turn your phones.
She looks so happy.
A motion was made by Mrs. Harris Mohammed, seconded by Mrs. Gray, for Ms. Gray to be deputy clerk. Mr. Sternavant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, yes. The next item on the agenda is, 1.06, receive for action, is new book procedures and standards of conduct for the current year that document was posted to what that, what, or that. And a copy has been placed, please.
Now, Mr. Chairman, should I go through relatively quickly, since we've had it for a while?
Basically, this is your opportunity to affirm your current policies and procedures, um, with respect to your school board procedures and standards of conduct. No changes have been made to the policy, but again, in your, in the current version of it, it provides that you will, um, excuse me, you will affirm this each year. You will adopt this school board procedures and standards of conduct for the current year at its organizational meeting. So this is your opportunity to affirm the policy as well.
I move that we adopt policy 1-1.5, school board procedures and standards of conduct.
Second. If she can say affirm it because there have been no changes, because this.
Okay, I move that we affirm the adoption of these standards of conduct. Cause I think adoption was in the language there.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Born. Um, I'd like to draw our attention to page two, the evaluation of school board operational, um, procedures, which speak to, uh, review of our performance annual. Since we've been on this board, we've not, uh, reviewed our performance at all. Um, will there be an opportunity for us to, to do that in this first, you know?
Uh, what I can say is, um, it is, uh, important that we do that, um, but I would ask if you would at least give us through the end of February, since we have to approve and adopt the budget that we need to send downstairs.
I can look at that.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, now clerk.
The motion was made by Ms. Gray, seconded by Mrs. Harris Mohammed to affirm the school board procedures and standards of conduct for the current year. Mr. Sternavant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yeah.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, yes. The next item on the agenda is item 1.07, to set your meeting dates. Your current meeting dates are the first and third Monday of the month at 6:00 PM. If Monday is a holiday, your meeting is on Tuesday. Did you continue with that or change?
Is there a motion?
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Sternavant, seconded by Mrs. Harris Mohammed to keep your meeting dates as they are. Mr. Sternavant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, yes. The next item is to recess your school board meeting and convene a public hearing on, uh, the superintendent's FY17 estimate of the CIP budget.
Before we, before we recess to hold a, um, public hearing, uh, it's been brought to our attention that some folks in the back are having a little hard time hearing, so if you could be mindful of speaking into our microphones when we just speak. So this time of recess, uh, school board meeting, and convening public hearing on the 2017 statement of economic need that's presented by the superintendent at our, uh, yes, ma'am.
The, uh, they always said that we would be discussing the superintendent's meeting dates as well as the CIP.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just to make clarity, it's just public comment. And the whole body of Congress did investments in these and CIP, so it's not a word. Discussion just received, comments. And so if there are, uh, individuals here who'd like to speak to the superintendent's estimate of need and the CIP budget, um, we ask that you address the podium. I think there's a sheet of paper on there to sign in. When you speak, state your name for the record. Individuals will be given three minutes to speak. Those representing a group or an organization will be given five minutes to speak. And a little off the touch with the rest of the, I think it's, you know, don't criticize use foul language, call anybody out by name. Board members, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, school board chair, vice chair, superintendent Bennett, and all members, all other members of the school board. My name is Charlotte Eyre, and I am president of the Richmond Education Association. I'd like to provide you with a little history. In 2008, the REA let everyone know that our compensation system was out of whack, not only for teachers, but also our support employees. A task force was put together to address our concerns. Task force made recommendations, and there were some things put, tried to be put in place, and nothing happened. 2008 rolled around, and we had the crash of the market. So that meant that there was no money to do anything about what had been promised or suggested. In 2009, president of REA, Angela Duce, came to the school board administration and said, "This is the time to do something about it. Let's be proactive while the economy is coming back. Let's put some things in place so that we can rectify the things that are wrong." Still, nothing happened. In November, I came to you again, and I brought the issue of the teacher salary scale being out of whack. I am very happy that this administration has chosen to do a salary study. Someone finally has listened to what we've been saying. I am glad that you see now what we have been saying all along, that we need to do something very soon and quickly about the salary schedule, not only for the teachers, but also our support employees. So tonight, I'd like to thank you for doing a salary study, and I'd like to implore upon you to do all that you can to make sure that the money is included in the budget request to decompress the salary scale for our teachers and to adjust the salary scale for our support staff. We have too many people who have been working for too long and staying on the same step so that new people are being hired, no experience. They're making the same thing as somebody who's been in that job eight years. It's unfair. So thank you for doing the work. REA remains at your service, and anything that we can do to assist you in doing this, please don't hesitate to, uh, ask us for some suggestions and concerns on how we can better get this done, so that all of us will be winning. Because if the teachers are safe and secure in their job, that means that we have highly qualified people standing in front of our children each and every day delivering highly qualified instruction, just like this young man on the end of the seats on a daily basis. Thank you.
That is, uh, one rule that we do have, that, uh, we, there's no applause or clapping of a common or public hearing.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Victoria Carl. I am a Richmond City Public Schools teacher and have been for eight years. And I come before you today on a very personal note. I've been honored to be Teacher of the Year, um, at my, locally at my school, a number of times, and a second runner-up this year to the city, um, citywide. I'm also an REB board winner this year. And to be honest, I work my tail off for my schools and my kids because I love them. Three years ago, I had a case of meningitis, and I landed in the hospital. And at that time, I was unable to pay the medical bills that came from that because our health insurance wasn't good enough to cover all of those bills. And so I filed bankruptcy a year and a half ago. I've been teaching with Richmond City Public Schools for eight years, and I have never received a salary increase based on my experience. Every year, I look at that contract, and I have to make a very important decision about the well-being of my family. I have a 12-year-old daughter. I am a single mom. I have to pay for childcare. And honestly, most of the time, I am unable to do that. I drive a 13-year-old car that has a check engine light perpetually on. When it's time to get new tires, I scrim and I save. I do not have a savings account that is reliable in any way. I'm coming to you because I love my job, and I love my kids, and I wanna stay. And I choose Richmond City Public Schools. But I need you to choose me back. I need you to choose that we're important enough to invest in, and we are, we give our hearts to you, and you know that, and I appreciate you doing the work. But if you can see like a personal face, like I'm up here, like and I'm, I am struggling financially. And I'm embarrassed to say that. I'm embarrassed when people come to me and say, "You're a teacher." I'm sorry. That should not be the case in this city. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Haas, and I am a proud member of the third district of the city of Richmond, the mostly proud parent of two Richmond Public Schools students, and also a mostly proud employee of Richmond Public Schools. And, um, I came here tonight really to say thank you. I know I, um, like to sit in the back and see what's going on, but, um, I'm really proud of the work that you have done, and I'm really proud, um, of this budget going forward. And I wanted to say thank you, and I also wanted to say that I know that I'm up here tonight preaching to the choir, but I hope there's someone else out there listening. And all of us that are here tonight to speak about our needs, and, um, they are very real. I hope that you will also show up at city council and let them know, um, what we go through, put a personal face on city, on it for city council as well. Cause I think sometimes that it means a lot more coming from us as parents and educators than it does coming from you all sitting up here. I just wanna tell a quick story about a, um, first of all, I tweeted an article and I tagged RPS. Hopefully you'll read it about bringing creativity back to the workplace. I thought it was really interesting. I think that's really super important that we, um, that we are creative educators, and I think everybody in this room is, and again, preaching to the choir. But I've been reading a lot about failure, and I heard an article, um, a story on the radio this weekend about Tiffany Anderson, who is the school superintendent in Jennings, Missouri. And she has really turned her school district around. She's done a lot of really innovative things. But what I really liked is, um, her students wanted to march when the Ferguson decision came in, and she really wanted to validate their feelings, but she didn't want them to miss school cause that was really important. So, um, she organized a way for them to be able to, um, take their complaints to, to the people that they wanted to be heard, and, um, still get them to school on time. And her students asked them, you know, "You're gonna get fired for this. This is really, you know, edgy." Um, and the interviewer asked her, she's like, "Were you worried about being fired?" And she said, "No." She said, "If I wor, if I'm worried about losing my job, then I can't do my job." And I think this budget and this, um, pay schedule is gonna go a long way in, um, taking the fear out of our jobs. If, if we are going to be able to do our jobs, we're gonna have to take risks. And I think as educators, what we need from you is the ability to take risks, without the fear of losing our jobs. So I appreciate all the work that you've done towards this, and, um, I will be there and talking to my council person, and I'll be there at city council, putting a personal face on it as well. So thank you.
My name is Tom Hardman. I'm speaking this, this evening as an individual. I wanna thank you for taking on the task of rationalizing the. I want to thank you for taking on the task of rationalizing the salary schedule. Much needed, much, much appreciated. I promised an instructional assistant colleague that I would make a special pitch for us instructional assistants. You may recall that there was a time in the past when we too were on a step system. I don't know why that was dropped, but I wonder if you might reconsider that, putting us back on a step system. And I also want to remind you that several years ago, as a result of federal law, instructional assistants were required to have a certain amount of college or pass a test. And one of our dearest colleagues at Little Mary Scott had to be fired because she needed either qualification, she had been an instructional assistant for many years, was shown the door. Teachers, I haven't seen a study, but it's my sense that young people these days coming out of college, in a job market where you don't expect to be working for the same company for the rest of your life. If you're a professional, you expect fairly rapid promotion if you're good. I think my sense is that's more true now for younger people than it used to be, that you expect rapid promotion if you are good. Teaching doesn't have a structure like that, so I just urge you to consider putting in something that does give people who have some years of experience a noticeable salary increase from people just beginning. That's it.
Good evening. My name is Chris Lombardi. I'm in my 13th year as a teacher with Richmond City Public Schools. I have with me a document that was created during last year's budget process for the current school year. It lists the expenditure additions to the current year's adopted budget and ranks them in order of decreasing importance or priority. On the list, a salary adjustment of 1.7% appears at number 19 out of a total of 33 items. It fell in the lowest of three tiers on the list. Before I go any further, let me say that I recognize that there's a lot about the day-to-day operations of a school district of which I'm unaware. As a teacher, I realize that I have ironically not done my homework as well as I should have in years past, but I am working vigorously to change that. Teachers need to not only be active participants of what goes on inside of their classrooms and schools, but also in the life of the larger school district in which they work. No man, no man is an island, so perhaps the same could be said of a school. In looking at this document, and again, through the eyes of a layman, it would appear that the school board has not held staff compensation as a high priority in the past, at least last year when making the current year's budget. To its credit, district leadership has opened a dialogue in numerous areas that have long gone unnoticed or neglected. The ongoing facilities discussion and Dr. Ben's commissioning of the salary studies is more than ample evidence of this. If my interpretation of this document is correct, then I urge the school board to make the inequities within the current pay scales for RPS employees a higher priority than it has in the past, to make it as high of a priority as the state of the district's facilities currently is. It will be difficult to ask city council to consider salary decompression a top priority on their list if the school board does not do the same on theirs. My concern is that if city council does not fully fund all of Dr. Ben's estimate of needs, and if salary decompression is a low priority to the school board, then it will not receive the funding it deserves. We can't just look to city council as being the only governing body that can do anything about fair compensation for teachers. Improved, improved facilities are important and should be a top priority, but attracting and retaining competent and experienced teachers must be as well. You can have state-of-the-art facilities and the best resources that money can buy, but if you do not have qualified, experienced, and motivated teachers in the classroom with the children, what good is any of it? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Garber. I am in my 10th year of teaching at Lewin Holton Elementary School. Nine years of that was spent in kindergarten, and I am in my first year in DPI there, and I do love it. I'd like to say thank you for the proposal to right-size the steps. I feel like it's the first time that I feel like it's even possible that I'm going to be shown some respect or appreciation when it comes to my salary, and this kind of just spells it out. I was, my first year was 2006. I was on step zero. It was changed the next year, or excuse me, I was on step three for zero years of experience. It was changed the next year to zero to one years. The following year, zero to two. After that, zero to three. 2010, zero to four. 2011, zero to five. 2012, zero to six years. 2013, zero to seven. 2014, zero to eight, and now this year, zero to nine years of experience. I'm in the same place 10 years later. It feels awful. My wife is also a Richmond Public Schools teacher. She has 13 years of experience. She is now a DPI teacher at Maymont Elementary, from Maymont to DPI Center. We're pretty much in the same place that we've been, but really, it's worse because we have children who are getting older and more expensive to take care of. Everything is more expensive, but there has not been an increase in our salaries, and it's mindfully, emotionally exhausting, and it's exhausting on the checkbook. And I ask you to please make it a top priority to right-size these steps and to give us what I think we have earned. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Treadway, and I've been a teacher in Richmond for the past 12 and a half years. Over the course of my career, I have worked on many school-based and district-level committees and have received several recognitions and awards, including being a recent recipient of the REB Award for Teaching Excellence and former Teacher of the Year and runner-up for Richmond Public Schools. I am currently working with many of my colleagues and community members to lobby city council in hopes they will fully fund our budget and facilities plan. However, tonight, I am here to speak to you about the importance of making the decompressed pay scale a top priority. Being an educator is a very complex, demanding profession that requires high levels of creativity, adaptability, thoughtful planning, and resourcefulness, much of which is learned from accumulative classroom experience. Throughout my career as an educator, I have seen my responsibilities grow, including additional paperwork, increased after-school workloads, larger class sizes, and longer contracted hours. While my responsibilities and workload have increased, my take-home pay has decreased. The current pay scale does nothing to reward the loyalty and service of veteran teachers. After nearly 13 years of experience, I am making a mere $2,000 more than a teacher just entering the profession. For so many years, we have been asked to do more with less, but tonight, you have the opportunity to change that. You have the opportunity to bring fairness to our salary system. You have an opportunity to show that you value and respect the many dedicated and loyal teachers who continue to put their heart and soul into educating the children of Richmond. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Ramachaner. I've been teaching for three years in Richmond Public Schools after many years working in the private sector. I'm standing up here today to ask the school board to support the decompressed pay scale and make it a top priority. Moving from the private sector, it took taking on student loans to go back for my masters in teaching and taking a pay cut. I had one of those great jobs where every year I had a percentage increase based on my performance. I had annual bonuses. But after I had my own children and being with them and educating them at home, teaching called me. And so I took on the extra bills to pay for my masters and to come and teach, and I love what I do. I absolutely love every single day coming and being with those kids. My bonus now are those handmade cards I get before Christmas, and that means the world to me. But when I hear what's happening to colleagues of mine who've been here much longer than me, as Ms. Treadway just said, she's been here 12, 13 years, and I've only been here three years, and the difference in our pay scale is minimal. And that is not fair to retain top talented professionals, and that's what we need to be focusing on. There are many young, talented teachers who chose, who choose not to come to Richmond, or they leave after only a few years. We need you to support us as much as you can. We're going to be here to go to city council to support you all in the budget, but we need to know that we are a top priority. We want you to please make decompressing the salary scale a top priority to help attract and retain qualified educators. And I want to thank you very much for allowing me the time to talk.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Brower. I am in the middle of my third year of being a full-time teacher in Richmond. I was a substitute for approximately 10 years before that. I have a student who is in college now and another one in the Richmond Public Schools right now. I want to speak sort of the same way that the previous speaker just spoke. As a brand-new teacher, it just seems illogical to me that my mentors and the people that I go to and knock on their door down the hall several times a day are making a minimal amount more than I am. I think we've done a good job of attracting bright, new teachers. I'm so excited about my job, it's almost unbelievable. And the new teachers that I see coming in feel the same way. However, when I see the people that are my mentors and where I hope to be several years from now not feeling the same way, partly because of the salary scale, I urge you to please act on that and make it a more fair system. Because the teachers that have been here for nine or 10 years, the ones that I go to every day, probably at least one hour every day, I'm either calling them, or knocking on their door, asking them for advice, they're the ones who keep me going, and we can't have them being unhappy. Thank you for your support.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Delano. I am a support staff in Rad ESH for a new elementary school. Also serve on the section four of the PTA there. Though I would like to talk about salary after that today, also, you know, some people deduct more than I take off. But I'm here on behalf of the building of ESH School. We know that we have been targeted for a new building, and I want to say it's early that we do get that included. We've been told that one of the worst, the school was one of the poorest shaped in any of the schools in the district. One of the other thing that we want to say is that we are thankful for the pod that we received this year. It does house the third to fifth grade, but there's still some concerns of safety and security in that building. Our kids will have to walk in the elements from one building to the other. We don't have room for special teachers apart from the EBS to have their own room, so throughout the day, they will have to go in the outside area. If a student's called from the classroom for dismissal, they need to be escorted, you know, so that we can be sure that they're safe. I have not noticed any damage to security in that pod as well, and everyone who has access are must come to that building. Staff members do not have keys to get in, and so therefore, they have to knock on the doors or interrupt a teacher or something to come out. So we know that that's temporary also, but the existing building, if it's delayed and pushed on, we know it's beyond, it would not be feasible to put more money into a building that is falling apart, basically. So, on behalf of the school, and the students, and the community, and support, we ask that you continue to press toward us getting that, and that please let the city council know, and I know you will, that we are really serious about the importance of having a new building at ESH. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mariah White, and I was not going to talk on the budget, but it seemed to have been brought to my attention. I was going to talk on something else that I'm going to add in, but Dr. Ben, I'm not sure how this was overlooked, the budget as a priority. This should have been the top priority four years ago when the new school board took a punt. How can teachers convey to their students that performance is important when they themselves do not even get paid for their performance? Maybe you need to take a look at that, because, see, I remember this year, you had a $1,500 discretionary fund, which you raised to $15,000. Some of you used it greatly to honor teachers. Some of you still hadn't done anything with it, didn't turn it back in, didn't do anything. But today, I sit before you because I wanted to come, because this is a school over in my district, second district, that was actually given a letter by Senator, a United States Senator, Mark R. Warner. And I just expected that maybe there would be a banner somewhere. Somebody could have brought a $59.95 banner for this school because it earned the fifth highest average SOL score of all elementaries in Virginia. Now, I think that's outstanding. Maybe not to some of you because maybe it wasn't a school that you expected, George Washington College. I think a banner should have been there, and that should have been by the second district representative, and I think it was unacceptable. And even if you're in your budget, and I would say again, I hope in the budget that you have help for our preschoolers, because they sent me on a wild goose chase on that also. Mary Scott still does not have a nurse for three- to five-year-olds. Someone told me Genna Park was assisting them. I called them myself, follow up on it, and they still don't have a nurse, which another incident occurred, and what did we get? We got John Marsh's high school nurse. I think if you're getting state and federal money, you need to have a nurse in a preschool that you just opened up. This is logistics. This is, this is, this is not rocket science. This is just common sense. And I am going to actually advocate for the teachers, because like some of them, these are experienced teachers. I don't care if you've been here from one year to 10 years. Who in the world worked 10 years and worked zero to anything? None of you have worked, you worked four years here, and you got a raise from $1,500 to $15,000, and all of you approved it. Think about that tonight.
Good evening. My name is Ladonna Freeman. I'm a fourth-grade exceptional ed teacher at Delvia Elementary School. This is my 10th year of employment with Richmond Public Schools. My first year was with, as a type one tutor. Currently, I'm in my ninth year as an exceptional ed teacher. Dr. Ben, I am the teacher that you say that you want. I am in my building most days by 7:15. A lot of days, I'm there by 7:00 AM. I shut it down with a custodian at 7:30 PM. There are many days when I see my principal in the building, and it is a rare occurrence, when she leaves the building before I do. I had perfect attendance last year. I attended all professional development days. I attended all school programs, including those held in the evenings until 7:00 or 8:00 PM. 8:00 p.m. I attended everything that happened, even on Saturdays. And I pride myself on differentiating instruction to meet the needs of all of my students with various learning styles. I handle my own discipline and seldom send the children to the office because the child that's sitting in the office is a child that cannot learn. I'm always reevaluating lesson plans, reassessing what I've taught, and spend a lot of my own money every year buying classroom materials because I have not received any money for the last three years to buy anything from my classroom or the hallway bulletin boards that I am required, emphasize, required, to change every other month. In addition to buying classroom items, I buy incentives to motivate my children because as a seasoned teacher, I know that you have to make it happen by any means necessary. So if that means I have to buy some Skittles to get a kid to learn six times tables, then that's what I do. My hard work is not without rewards. My student scores have shown growth every year that I have been a Richmond Public Schools teacher. They work hard for me because the research shows that children work hard for the teachers that they know love, care, and support them. Last year, all of my students' math scores increased, and one of my ID babies' math scores increased from his third-grade math scores 101 points, and that is something that a first-year teacher cannot produce. After nine years of teaching for Richmond Public Schools, I am still paid like my coworkers who are in the building who are first-year teachers. Something's wrong with that. In 2010, Bellevue was named a National Blue River School. We are now a focused school. We used to be staffed with highly qualified, experienced teachers, however, many of them have now left and moved on to other districts. RPS has transitioned into a training district for Hanover, Chesterfield, and Hemright Gardens. Now, many people spent yesterday watching their favorite team play football, hoping that they would make the playoffs. Richmond is now a district with a new coach, with great ideas and wonderful plays, handing off to a squad perpetually running in place because our salaries have been stagnant for so many years. Let's move forward, increase those salaries, or risk another year of losing another round of our most valuable players. Can we really afford more personnel losses to other districts?
Good evening, board members, Dr. Ben, and attorney, the attorney that's here. My name is Candace Lucas. I'm with Advocate for Equity in Schools, a national organization that deals with children and their needs, and we're watchdog, and that's why I'm here today because I'm a watchdog. I'm here to talk to you about the fact that Dr. Ben has requested increased funds. However, we have yet to see that the school district has thought of an internal audit that is outside of what you guys propose as far as how you're spending taxpayers' dollars. There is massive fraud, waste, and abuse going on in our special education departments. Massive. I can go to three different schools in this district and see the extent of the fraud, waste, and abuse. I am challenging this school board to have an independent audit of how you're using your money. And I am also challenging this school board to give up your salaries for a year. Give up your salaries. If you truly believe in the school system and you truly believe in our children, you don't need the money. I can see, looking at you, you don't need the money. Give up your salaries until every school in this district is fully accredited. That is a level of commitment that we need from these school districts, from these school board members. I have been to numerous schools where I see individuals who are not doing what they're supposed, not like the educators that are speaking before us. But I'm talking about the fact that these schools are administratively heavy. There are teachers who are better leaders than some of the administrators. You need to be using the teachers at any capacity that you can so they're not having to pay all the money for administrators who really don't know their job. The administrator at Albert Hill, I asked her, "Do you know special education?" She told me no. So my question...
Ms. Lucas, one of the rules that we have is that we don't call out any individual by name or in such a way that they can be identified, so we just keep it general.
Are you taking up my time, sir?
The time has stopped, ma'am.
Okay, no, it wasn't. Okay, go ahead.
We'll give you the 20 seconds that I took to talk.
Okay, thank you.
Just a general reminder, we don't want to prescribe any...
I went to Albert Hill, and I sat in a meeting, and I found out that an administrator that I was working with could not recite to me or explain to me what special education policy was, yet they're making close to six figures. That's a problem for me. We need an external audit of how money is being used in this district, or else the superintendent asked me for almost over $20 million. But what? When you're not using the money you need to, to meet the needs of children? That's what we need. We need you to give up your salaries so that we can do what we need to do, and you can have an invested interest because right now you don't. The school board does not have an invested interest right now. So that's what we need you to do. We need you to take a close look at fraud, waste, and abuse in special education services. We need to take a hard look at how Medicaid funds are being used in the school district because they're being misused. You're going to end up all facing federal charges if you don't get yourselves together. These are facts. I'm not spewing this. I'm trying to help y'all stay out of jail. Okay, so you need to do an external audit because I've already done it. I see what's going on. I know what's going on. I know this money is not going to help our children. I know this money is going to go toward top-heavy administrators who do not interact with our children, and it should be going to classroom teachers and other resources that interact directly with our children. You need to reevaluate who's working in central office and who's just there taking up air. You need to do all of that. If you did that, you wouldn't have to ask for over $20 million, Superintendent Ben. This school district has turned into its own Frankenstein, and it doesn't need to be that way. When did you guys stop thinking about children as a priority? That's my question. Every decision that you make, you should be asking yourself, "How does this benefit a child?" Not just my child that goes to Holton, but how does this benefit a child? Because every child in this district is your child. And I'll come back every month, every week. I'll come back and say it every time I get an opportunity. You need to do an external audit, and you need to forfeit all your salaries until this school district meets where they need to be. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to offer a public comment for the public hearing statement of economic needs? If you would, last call, come on up.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Kelly. I teach kindergarten in Holton. I'm standing here not as a veteran teacher, but as a new teacher nervous to stay in a district in which my financial future is unsure. I'm under the impression that I'm getting paid the same as teachers who have been teaching in RPS for years. Without these veteran teachers, RPS would not be as strong as it is now. I have learned more from the teachers in my building than I did in five years studying my masters at VCU. Providing appropriate compensation for years worked in RPS would not only keep us as strong as we are now, but would also continue to attract fresh and highly educated teachers to come to RPS and stay in RPS. Thank you for having me here.
Is there anyone else who would like to offer comment for the public hearing on the statement of economic need? Seeing none, we will adjourn the public hearing and reconvene our regularly scheduled meeting. Matt Burke.
And the next time we reach a public information period, I do not have any speakers inside of anybody, Mr. Chair.
If there are folks here who would like to offer public comment on something other than the proposed statement of economic need, if you would do as they have done in line of business center aisle, the rules of the road are generally the same. Three minutes for individuals, five minutes for those representing a group who are afraid from personal attacks, use profanity, promote private business. And again, no applause. So please again, sign in, state your name before you start speaking, and thank you.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Ben and meeting guests. My name is Thea Paul. I'm a board-certified teacher of 22 years, and I'm currently a library and media specialist in Richmond Public Schools. In light of the discussion of the budget, I'd like to discuss the teacher workday. Now, I'm certain that last year instructional hours changes were made with great consideration and discussion regarding its impact on academic achievement. In light of your decision to standardize the school day hours for students, I'm perplexed by the randomized teacher workday schedules across the district. Provision C in the Special Covenant section of the Teacher Employment Contract states, "The school board and the division superintendent shall determine the length of the school day, the time teachers shall spend at school prior to and following the actual times that pupils are in school, and other matters relating to the operations of schools." The contract is a legal instrument agreed upon by the parties named therein. They include the employee, Clerk Angela Lewis, Mr. Donald Coleman, and Dr. Dina Ben. As per signatures on the contract, school principals are not authorized parties to the contract. Therefore, may I respectfully request clarification as to why principals are allowed to alter the contractual arrangement and to establish daily site-based teacher work hours when they clearly are not sanctioned parties to do so. Would it be possible to share the discussion that was had amongst the board regarding the decision to allow modification of the teacher contract after employee acceptance of the contractual terms? As a result, one faculty group may report at 8:15 every day. Other faculty groups may report at 8:30 every day. In the most extreme of cases, teachers at one school's School A will report at 8:00 a.m., and another school's School B, for example, will report at 8:45. Based on current time disparities at the end of 194 instructional days, a salary teacher in School A would have been mandated to work 145 hours, 19.4 days, and 3.88 full work weeks longer than his or her salary colleague on the same pay step at School B. Uniformity of the teacher workday as established only by the school board and division superintendent and as supported by the Declaration and Special Covenant, Provision C, is non-negotiable. Anything less is unreasonable and unprofessional. A failure to abide by Special Covenant, Provision C, would compromise the terms of the teacher contract. At minimum, I ask that you would rectify this infraction against Special Covenant and make a motion for the immediate standardization of the time teachers shall spend at school prior to the instructional day. Thank you so much for your attention and consideration to my concern.
My name is Tom Hartman. I'm speaking as an individual. I'd like to make a comment regarding the school board procedures and standards of conduct document that you all dealt with earlier. In particular, provision four and five, which I believe have been taken to imply that school board members are to be in their district's school board, excuse me, in their district's schools only at the invitation of the principal. If this informal policy is taken to follow from the idea that the school board's primary role is policy, I would suggest to you that there is an ombudsman function as well that should, in the future, be written into the bylaws. I think school board members should feel free to be in their schools at any time. I don't think they should need to be invited. The schools do not belong to the principal. It is true, they should not go around telling people what to do, that they can observe, report back through the superintendent to what they observe. So please consider that, the ombudsman function that the citizen and the staff need from the school board members.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to you, Mr. Vice Chair, and all members of the Richmond Public School Board. I greet you this evening on behalf of Richmond Coalition for Quality Education. Just wanted to point out a few green things. I just come to you...
Sir, please state your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Gregory Olday Senior. And I stand before you just to say a few things. Number one, as we go into this new year with a new chair, vice chair, who was chair, who was chair as well, we are asking that you be more transparent. You know, I have come to this board several times on good terms, saying that we want to work with you, but we can't work with a board that's not being transparent. I can't even support a board that's not being transparent when we find out things later on. You know, we don't need any mishaps like we had in the news about a $15,000 lawsuit that has been settled. We're talking about taxpayers' money that someone threatened the board, and the board decides they're going to go ahead on and pay $15,000 to settle this case. Why do we have to hear that from the news media when the public should have known about that anyway? We can help you when things like that happen, but you have to be open with us. Be honest. Trust me. Some of you may not trust me. That's fine, but I will give you my all. I give you my word. You continue to have lawsuits, lawsuits. We continue to spend money. We talk about our kids. Our focus is not on our kids. It's about this board right here. That's what we see. We end up in court. We're spending money, wasting money. Number one is you have a lawyer that sits on your board every day, and the coalition is going to be looking at this. But we're paying thousands of dollars for a law firm to send you a representative, but when we go to court, you hired a law firm from a town somewhere and paying more money. That's a waste of money, guys. Come on, be real. That is a waste of money. So I challenge you right now, work with us, and we will work with you. Be honest with yourselves and see where your money is going to. I heard Ms. Lucas say that an audit needs to be done. Dr. Ben, you're welcome an audit. He only been here two years, I believe, but you should welcome an audit to be done to find out where this money is going to. Another thing, Clock Springs Elementary School, I've sat there and looked across the street at that school many, many times. What are you going to do about it? What are you going to do about it? The public is out there saying that y'all are going to put whatever the school does now, that used to be CCP or whatever. I'm getting told by workers, I'm getting phone calls, people that work for the school system, "Great, you're here to go do Clock Springs, they're going to open it up and put CCP in there." Is that true? Just tell us. Don't hold it back. Let us know. The public should be aware of that. I challenge you, Mr. Moore. I challenge you. My friend, Mr. Coleman, why don't you come to the coalitions meeting and talk to us about what's going to happen with Clock Springs Elementary School? Invite every one of you. We're meeting on February 2nd, PNC to be right, February 2nd, at Second Baptist Church. If anything changes, I'll let you know. But talk to us about these issues that we have. We can be open. I just gave you three issues that we will be looking at, will be looking at. And the last thing is, Dr. Ben, I can't take this man, Mr. Jefferson. We had a banquet last year, Richmond Coalition for Quality Education, and we gave away, we're supposed to give away three $1,000 scholarships, but we had one child that did not take advantage of that $1,000 scholarship, and that hurt me to the core because during that banquet, Dr. Ben, you said to give the trophy and award information to Mr. Jefferson. We did that. We don't have to know where the kid is, what happened. I asked him at the last board meeting what happened. He told me that he bought the award back here, a trophy, somebody gave it to an administrator, and administrator was supposed to make sure the kid got it. If they got it, we don't want to think about it, but the kid never got the award, the scholarship. Now, the scholarship is, we don't have any dollars to give, the $1,000. But all the two were very grateful. We were able, one kid was not going to be able to go to school. I want y'all to know... I want y'all to know that. That $1,000, his mother begged and pleaded to get the whole $1,000. We gave everything in our, that we were capable of doing to give that $1,000 to that kid. And we have another young lady who we're ready to pay her spring, I think it's the spring, Miss Yerba, spring. I think it's, we're ready to pay $500 for, the next semester's coming up. But we're ready to have another banquet again. So, we hope that this don't happen again. I thank you for your time. I can go on and on and on, but please, please, Mr. Moore, if you can, make some time for the coalition. Dr. Bedden, make some time for the coalition. We want to work with you. We want to change things. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in line, I just want to thank everyone who participated in the public hearing on the budget as well as the public information period. It always does our hearts well to have such an engaged community and support system for our schools. We have a number of significant examples.
The next item is out of five academic improvement items. 5.01 received an update on four next-generation learning candidates. Those documents are posted to your desk.
Good evening. I do have some prints and copies of people who are on some of the documents.
Okay, I wanted to come before you and give you an update. You also have received a weekly update report at the end of November when we began our Phase One of looking at career academy models for the four next-generation learning. Since then, in our Phase One, we've had three principals and the director of Career and Instruction to visit Nashville, Tennessee, and myself, and we had a two-day tour of Nashville schools and the whole concept of career academy models. And I would say that, I would like to say that it was a great experience. So, after our visit of our four team members for four next-generation learning, they gave us some suggestions, and I wanted to share that with you all today, some of the recommendations they have for our overall career and technical education program and looking at our academics and how we can create this career academy model. Pretty much just an overall briefing only because a lot of what was said was for all the schools, so I'm just going to point out some of the things that they mentioned for all the schools. So, when we're looking at the career academy model, we definitely have to look at marketing and branding it for the schools, definitely having a community involvement, seeing that this is a community-driven approach. So, it's not just the school, but it is a collaboration of the community. Again, teachers would get extensive training on the model, teaming, and looking at our curriculum, and also ensuring that they have opportunities to have its next sternships so they can understand the different career opportunities that they're recommending for our schools. Other things that they talked about was definitely parental involvement and engagement strategies that we need to have overall, again, for all of our schools, exposure for our students through mentorship, shadowing opportunities. And lastly, definitely looking at our course offering and aligning them to industry needs and occupational needs in our region, in our city. So, I'm just going to go through real quick and just highlight that some of the specifics for each school and for each site. They did look at Richmond Technical Center. They did suggest that they look at joining comprehensive school, and again, that was confusing some of our academics with our career and technical education courses there, looking at our labs and upgrading them, and possibly, as we looked at some of their recommendations, we thought about some possible themes that would thrive at each one of those schools. So, for Richmond Technical Center, we did look at health and medical science as a possibility to either start it as a pocket career academy or for all students, that means every student would participate in that. Franklin Military Academy, again, after interviewing the principals and the teachers, and even some of the students, they spoke to some of the students, they saw some of the specialties at each school, and definitely Franklin Military Academy stood out in their STEM, actually cybersecurity and IT initiatives that they already were doing a lot of things there, and then, so that would really be a great place for us to look at that string of career pathway. And of course, because they're Franklin Military Academy, definitely looking at their leadership program over there also. Obviously, that would, we would need a lead technology teacher to venture into that cybersecurity IT world. George With, pretty much George With and John Marshall were very overall improvements to possibly using Makerspace in the schools, making it more definitely hands-on and relevant career pathways. So, we suggested the international tourism and hospitality, and that would definitely include some courses in world language, culinary arts of that nature to help that theme and thrive that theme at George With. John Marshall, we had suggested, again, same thing, very basic, either start small with pocket career academies, or we can do it from all to where all students will be engaged in an international business and marketing career pathway. Armstrong High School, again, some of the same suggestions, looking at our CTE course offering and definitely making an impact on our workforce needs, where are the biggest needs in our workforce, and looking at some possible themes in human services. And these are, again, career pathways where the students can see when they start off in a position, they can actually excel to higher positions in the workforce, such things as dietitian, early childhood education, looking at entrepreneurship also to infuse in some of those personal care and counseling kind of positions, definitely something to infuse our family and community service to help them to understand that. And that is a theme that was suggested for Armstrong. And finally, looking at Freshman Academy, they were talking about, you know, what they've already done, what they've already started, and they definitely set to start, you know, to continue that and look at that to make it a model, Freshman Academy at Armstrong High School. Huguenot, of course, they did see the potential, the opportunity, one with the building capacity, and obviously it's updated, and a lot of the input was towards STEM. Definitely looking at Huguenot as a STEM thing there. Lastly, Thomas Jefferson, again, not to exclude all of our programs and our gifted programs since IB already has a career-related program, to definitely infuse the IB in the career-related programs, again, to make sure we provide the students with some academic and 21st century career skills at Thomas Jefferson. Some of the things that we're obviously already doing and have to do that is already infusing some of their recommendations and suggestions is to provide PD for our teachers and our administrators about the career academy model, definitely look at our CTE course offerings and making it towards some of their recommendations, which we are. We're looking at our courses, seeing what's relevant, see what we still need. Obviously, instructional materials and equipment goes with those recommendations. We're already secure business partners, looking at current initiatives that already line up with some of those recommendations. Also, middle school opportunities, we're definitely looking at middle school opportunities, which they suggested that even at Franklin Military, you may want to start some kind of awareness for the middle school grades, so that is something that we're also working on, making sure we firm up some project-based learning in the middle schools, which again, is in line with their recommendations for our career academy. So, the outcome, these last two, the next two slides pretty much talks to, and if you take a look at your four next-generational learning roadmap, obviously, in Phase One, we want to look at the outcomes. What are we trying to do? What are we trying to get at? Phase One, we did that. We understood the benefits and the features of this career academy model. Now, we're at Phase Two, and that's where they're recommending us to then look at our outcomes. Are we ready to, and are we preparing ourselves to get a deeper understanding of this community-wide career academy? Are we looking at the experiences in the secondary schools, again, using a community-driven approach? How do we prepare and begin to do that is what their recommendation is for Phase Two. Are we understanding what the systems, the structures needed, the processes, what are the competencies needed for us to implement this plan? So, we're having to prepare, and they're going to tell us in Phase Two how that goes about. So, definitely, number one, we have to include that community engager, that organization, who right now we're in collaborations with the Greater Chamber of Commerce, Greater Eastern Chamber of Commerce, and the Community Wealth Building Office, again, to look and identify what are some of those things we need to do, such as looking at our businesses, what business associations do we have, councils, post-secondary institute? How can we coordinate what we have, our assets, and how do we all do that? The superintendent's Business Advisory Council is a great place to begin that process of looking at what our resources are and the demands for Richmond Public Schools and for Richmond itself. So, they suggested, the next two slides are some suggestions on how we go about doing that, obviously looking at a small steering committee, possibly preparing for that plan in Phase Two, and maybe even going out and looking at another visit and possibly in Florida, but definitely preparing for Phase Two. So, what will that take? In Phase Two, their estimated cost for us, and this is the scope of the work in the next two slides for Phase Two, it would cost us about $80,000. In the roadmap, you notice that they gave a range of estimate of 20 to 100,000, but they've actually given us a pretty good estimate based on the work they've done in Phase One and what we are to look forward to in Phase Two of $80,000. And as you can read, it's three suggestions or three different things that we will be doing in Phase Two to prepare us, to get that master plan looked at. How do we go about creating that master plan? And they also gave us suggestions for Phase Three. How will that look and what estimate of that is $60,000? And again, if you notice, two suggestions, it will involve people, it will involve professional development, it will involve committees sitting there to come up with a master plan, again, to create those career academies in our schools.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Ms. Speaker, yes, Ms. Asher Muhammad, Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. With regard to these budget, these numbers, do you anticipate, are you making this presentation because you have an expectation that we will look at at least the funding for Phase Two as a part of the budget?
Now, at this point in time, one of the tasks and challenges, the task of both the Office of Community Wealth Building, Superintendent Business Advisory and Chamber is to try to find external funding sources to get the kid in the first phase. There is so far high interest from the business community, the national law of work, Los Haider invested in the business community, partnering with the school district to have a true collaboration. Thad Williamson has been made aware of this, trying to partner with the resources that may come from that office to create these career pathways, academies, models, so next hope is to secure external funding for Phase Two.
So, do we start the discussion with the parents, students now? Do we anticipate this is something that we're going to make happen?
They, the part of the service which you're paying for is they lead the process too for engagement. So, they try to bring the parties together and be a mutual body during that process. So, that's part of what is the deliverable that they do. So, they've done this, and as we showed you in a previous presentation, the map of several cities, research base, rural model, we're not a G P, we've been successful, so part of what they do is part of engagement, is part of the deliverable.
This timeline, so if everything goes according to plan, we borrow money, we could have these models up and running in the next three years?
If you follow your timeline, and I'll have it in front of you in a moment, that sounds about right for my mind. Now, what they will tell you, what they always say is, every school district they work with, and I know they're Virginia, Norfolk, and-
Hampton, just Hampton.
Hampton, they're in Target, Hamper. Their infrastructure determines how fast you move, so where you are already, would you have a place to expedite or slow it down also? Do you follow what I'm saying?
So, do we have enough in place that we could expedite?
No.
Ms. Asher Muhammad?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for the presentation. I am excited because, board members, remember last, last year during our budget cycle, I had asked if we could, as a district looking to, starting with our high schools, having some type of academies. I didn't name academies, I just said, look, I think that a possible way of increasing student achievement is to have a focal point of some type of academies in our high schools. So, I'm excited to hear that. I was excited to read the weekly report, and you all were doing some work, or had done some work, so kudos to you all. I support the idea because I know what academies, strong academies with a focus on student achievement can do. How would this be communicated via the staff? I may be asking questions that are a little early, but how would this be communicated via the staff in the district as a whole? And then, can we look at possibly middle school models as a feeder for those particular high schools? That may be an early question as well. And will Ford NGI come to Richmond to offer training? If not, then what do we need to do as a district to, you know, to send folks to do that?
And that is part of the Phase Two, to look at the plan and answer all those questions, and also definitely provide visits to Richmond, provide support to the community organization that is, that we're in partnership with. So, they will be with us at every step of the way during these phases, but the Phase Two is to sit down and actually prepare that plan and answer all those questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I had six more, but I'm just-
Ms. Larson?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for this presentation. As most of you know, I went on the trip, I went to Nashville last year, and we saw, met with a lot of the folks that had put this together. It was really great, and I think a big thing and a big reason why the business community was so interested in that and coming back from it is they continue to talk about their return on investment and how the dropout rate had decreased and how students were graduating with more credits and going on to college, and all these positive things were happening. Now, this is over four or five years, so it's a huge time investment, but I think it's worth it, and I think if we can put ourselves on the path to do this initiative, I think it would be great. I also think that council is a big part of this, and Councilwoman Mosby had this CTE mission, and they've talked a lot about these types of initiatives, and I think if, as we're moving forward with us, if we can look at some sort of joint agreement between the two bodies to get the business community's support, I think it will be a lot stronger if the two of us go to the business community together and say this is the best thing for our city and our schools, and we want to support this collectively. So, thank you, and you have my support as this moves forward. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
I'm going to finish the preliminary conversations about the parental outreach that you all plan to do. How are you planning on going about reaching some of the parents, or have you already started that conversation?
Well, not with-
Phase Two starts part of that conversation because one of the things they said in the presentation is, while they have some past practices, they don't assume that all those exact things are what they do in every district. They started with, here's what we have done, here's what we've seen, you tell us what are your issues. Again, one of the things we're quite on, that's just a general passing, is we reach a lot, but we don't get the response a lot, challenging, so. So, there is no, what I appreciate is there was no, this is what we do and that's all to do, but it's, we need you to talk to us also and try to figure out, here's what we do do. It's, we need you to talk to us also and try to figure out, here's what we do do, what has been your experience with this, does this work or does not? What other things that you, they say that we might want to consider? Now, obviously there's unlimited, well, they try to do everything, but you try to find which are the key things that would get you a bigger return on investment, this one is engagement.
Okay. Are we possibly sent all the connections about P T As?
I think that's all those are, all those, pockets of pools of people that can share what they're talking about. Again, they also, part of what they do is fact find about what aren't existing. One of the things they said to us is that we need to know what exists already too, that's functional. So we don't come in and just decide we got to create a new group, maybe we take existing groups and break them together. So that was one comment that was made to us as part of the process. And I do want to close the loop on something. I think we have, most remember there is a meeting with Councilwoman Mosby coming up to update her on this because she did speak to me a while back about some redirection with the commission and asked her not to reconstitute it until we break her up speed on this because we, one of the things they shared with us in their meeting is, what they have seen that defeats this process is multiple groups working differently. They try to come in and pull everybody on the same page and get them together on the same, so we have a meeting coming up with her to get her up to speed to try to leverage her or her position on C T, which has been very serious. And when we could not, I shared that it was appropriate for me to have that sit happen to me. And as long as shown to you, we want to give you that. And share with you what the visit said before they saw embargo business, that office, foundation office, because they had started fundraising, I got unlimited access to this, but told them that they're not shared until we update it, you know, we need them to start working on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is five point zero two, the discussed Virginia Urban Crescent letter to the Governor regarding funding.
Yeah, I believe that is, Mr. Coleman?
Yes, in my previous life as chairman, I had the opportunity to attend Virginia's Urban Crescent meeting where it's members of various jurisdictions are coming together to basically lobby government for more support for K-12 education. I sent you all an email today, a copy of the letter in it. And so my recommendation is that we allow our new chairman to sign this letter and our support.
Ms. Harris Mahoney?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Does that require us to make a motion? Would you like a consensus? I support that. I read it, thank you, Mr. Coleman, for the email and the update, but I hope we, we will encourage your, support your signature on that because this is critically important. Many other districts have shown their written support as well. I don't, I don't know them all, but I know several, you know. Many of them are urban districts just like us, so it's not two cents for that. I give you a pen if you need it.
Mr. Coleman, I'd refer to you since you know what might be most effective from our perspective.
I think most effective is if we just do a consensus to allow you to sign, I think that's fine.
I support. Good question.
Ms. Harris.
The governor has already made an announcement of his intent to put more money into education. So what, let's kind of thought on, are we asking him above and beyond that?
Well, primarily, yes, to some level, but it's, you know, the governor can suggest one thing, is legislature, that's more, we put pressure also on the legislature to support the things he's put forward. And if you, you know, you look at the letter, the four key points is also exposing the reality since oh nine, you know, funding for public education has been reduced by over a billion dollars. You know, Virginia local governments are contributing double what they did back in those days. And so we're just trying to, again, make sure that they understand that there are a group of us who are all working together. That's, that's more what this is about. And if you remember, a few years ago, when there was a situation around transportation, this same group came together and they were able to see that when we come together as a group, as a block like that, it actually puts more pressure on the legislature, which we have one.
So we'll go around the room. Next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is five point zero three, receive report from board members attending the Virginia School Boards Association Annual Conference.
Who attended the conference?
I did.
Mr. Coleman, Ms. Harris Mahoney, Ms. Taylor. Who wants to go first?
Um, delegate, yeah. So I can, I can't.
Why don't you give an overview and the folks can fill in any holes?
Okay, that's fine. So I appreciate the board allowing me to continue to serve as a delegate to the Virginia School Board Association. The annual convention was this past November two thousand and fifteen and a lot of things happened. One of the things that was a highlight of the annual convention was facilitating, school boards in Virginia facilitating school board self-evaluation. And board self-evaluation provides more than just accountability and communication. It provides an opportunity for building the best possible leadership for the division and the communities that we serve. Commitment to quality, excellence, and continuous learning and local control of the educational system is demonstrated when boards lead by example. I had the opportunity and the honor to serve as a moderator for this session. I have also participated as a facilitator when they have met here in January, which was pretty cool. And one of the reasons why this was a highlighted session for the convention is because school boards need to understand on a continued basis the importance of doing a board evaluation, period. When you do not evaluate how you perform, student achievement does not increase, period. There is a direct connection between an effective school board and student achievement. And not only that, but you have to, or you should be encouraged as school board members to do individual evaluations for yourself, like a reflection. How did you start? Did you grow? In what areas? And then how did you end? So it is something that this board has worked on, as you heard Mr. Born say earlier, maybe sometime in the February, we'll do our board evaluation. But what's also critically important to that is we evaluating ourselves, how we act, period. We have to begin to hold ourselves accountable for the work that we do. One of the things that we have to think about, someone said it earlier, I don't know who, but someone said it earlier, are the decisions that we make tied to student achievement? Yes or no? There is not a gray area with that question. If the decisions that we're making do not tie into student achievement, then we need to rethink the decisions that we make. So I, I really enjoyed moderating that session, I had a great time. I kind of cut up a little bit in the session because it was, it was really, really, really courageous conversation. I cut up in a good way, let me redefine it, Mr. Media's here. But it was really good because there are, there are a lot of school boards in Virginia that do board evaluations, but don't act on the recommendations that they make. Then there are several school boards in the Commonwealth that do board evaluations and they do act on the recommendations that they make. So I am hopeful that this board will do both. Because if you do a board evaluation and then it's not public, then what was the purpose? It has to be public, okay? Then there were a lot of other things that were discussed. One, I attended the, of course, the delegate session, so there's a lot, I'm not going to sit here and talk about all ninety-six pieces of legislation that they're going to attack, but three main pieces are, that's out there in several districts, Fairfax is one, I think Lynchburg is another one, it's the rezoning issue. Then the other piece is allergies in schools, okay? Of course, we know about the loss of the child in Chesterfield County and then the outcome of that. And then the, the third piece was lobbying for the, the composite index, I'm sorry, that comes up every, every single year, that comes up. So I, I'm encouraged because I always grow when I tend, I always come back with great pieces of information. It helps me as a school board member and it also helps me as an educator to understand because I'm seeing the other facet of public education. So I did bring back the annual convention program, I will leave a copy with the clerk, so if anyone in the public wants to come and see, it has my notes, it has highlighted pieces of information, I will leave a copy with her, it's thick. And then also the ninety-six pieces of legislation that the Virginia School Board Association will be addressing this assembly. And the last piece, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I was, excuse me, I just received an email today and I wanted to share this with the public because I think it's important, shows the growth in this board, that I was asked to serve as a mentor to newly elected school board members in Virginia. And I think that speaks to not only individual growth, but it also speaks to the growth of this board and how people, they are looking at us and how we have started, how we have migrated, and how we're hopefully going to end, and people, they are looking at individuals that can serve others in that capacity, so I'm honored to do that. Thank you.
That certainly is. Any other attendees want to fill in very briefly?
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
I just want to briefly piggyback off of Ms. Harris Mahoney's discussion about the board evaluation. Although we had already started that process, Mr. Coleman, Ms. Taylor, and myself, I had an opportunity to review the documents that Virginia School Board Association is putting forward. We've been working on a very similar document, so what I suppose is that prior to that February, that we reconvene and mess those documents together.
And I sent those, I scanned them and sent them to everybody.
Ms. Taylor, yeah?
Just wanted to add briefly that there were quite a few breakout sessions, not nearly what you would see in a, on a national level. They gave me cause to pause to, to, and I'm glad to have had those experiences. But I was able to see how it turned at work as they gave their session together. I think my greatest takeaway would probably be the discussions on the middle school level and instruction, so as I visit school to school, I can actually know what to look for and, and how to engage students and not be distracting, so it was just nice to have a variety.
One of the breakouts I went to was led by Joan and Burke Holder, who was the director of the Office of Student Services for Virginia Department of Education, outstanding presentation, dealing with attendance and chronic absences and discipline and suspensions, how all this is related. Her presentation focused on shifting our paradigm by dealing with attendance to a goal and action-oriented practice, where there is a multi-tiered strategy to reduce chronic absences. And of course, I was very impressed with her presentation, but I was also impressed that our face department is already employing so many of the tactics and strategies that she put forward and I continue to be excited about that department within our organization. Another highlight is you get to be with your other colleagues on the boards, that was a great opportunity there with, you know, South Side Regional. One final thing that I really appreciated was the main session where Mr. Rory Vaden, amazing motivational speaker, I came away with this statement, this session helped me recognize that completing priorities is the way to create opportunities to take on larger issues. And I feel for us as a board, definitely one of the things that we got to continue to work towards, getting our priorities done so then we can look at some of these larger issues which continue to play us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is item six, budgetary items, there are none this afternoon. Item seven, board actions, receive for action a resolution requesting the use of city council chambers for the two thousand sixteen school board meetings. That resolution was posted to board docs and it is the same resolution that you all approve every year, we just send down, of course, with the date of the board meetings asking that council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is there a concerted effort this year through the off-site meetings that we did last year?
I think we should, I think it worked out well while we were fixing this room, but I think as we move forward throughout the year, we ought to make sure we're hitting all parts of the city. I know it's nice to go to U G I, it's nice to go to M O K, but there are a lot of other parts of the city that we need to go to make it easy for our parents, community members to attend the school board meetings, so.
I just wanted to, as we approved this, to make sure that that was a priority for this year. If that's all, thank you.
The motion was made by Mr. Sternman and seconded by Ms. Harris Mahoney to approve the resolution requesting use of council chambers. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, unanimous. The next item is item seven point zero two, receive for action budget transfers. Those budget transfers were on board acts.
Good evening. There are three budget transfers that do require your approval this season because they exceed ten thousand, and then there are four provided for your information. I'm happy to answer any questions if I have.
Ms. Harris Mahoney?
Um, I'm, excuse me, I may not be reading this correctly, so I'm going to depend on you to help me, I'm sure you will. Under Department of Curriculum and Instruction, the request was November the twenty-third, office supplies and the lab for four thousand, and then write local travel for four thousand.
Correct.
Can you talk to me about what, the office supplies, I think I'm clear, but the travel?
He requested a reduction in office supplies to facilitate travel between buildings in his department.
Who was this?
Mr. Washington, Director of Training and Instruction.
Okay.
He had an original budget of seventeen thousand, but the office supplies are only two thousand, and travel, and we use additional funds to.
So we're just moving four thousand out of one, okay, okay.
One category.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I'm good, I'm good.
Is our motion to approve the ones that require approval?
So, second.
Any discussion? Hearing on, Madam Clerk?
The motion was made by Mr. Sternman, seconded by Dr. Jones to approve his budget transfers. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes eight with one abstention. The next item is seven point zero three, receive for action, human resources actions.
Mr. Phillips?
School board members, good evening. The H R agenda for tonight includes actions for approval. The HR agenda for tonight includes actions for approval, which include the nomination of 10 employees, the change of contract of seven employees, the transfer of three employees, and actions for information include the resignation of four employees, the change of name of one employee, the rescission of employment of one employee, and the reappointment of one employee. In addition, you receive an addendum for tonight, which includes two additional nominations, five resignations, one rescission of a resignation, and one reappointment.
Are there any questions that were processed, discussed, or enclosed? Good question now or enclosed? Okay, thank you.
The next item is 7.04, Receive School Board Travel and District Activity Request. I only have one request for district activity funds at this time, and that's, Mrs. Harris-Mohammed is requesting membership in the National Coalition for 100 Black Women, and the cost of that membership is? Thank you.
Just.
Ms. Pinniels?
One question to add. Are those new news? Is that the amount of the membership that you've been, that they told you?
Okay. Any further questions regarding Ms. Harris-Mohammed's request for district funds? Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Is that?
The motion was made by Ms. Harris-Mohammed, seconded by Mr. Sternavon to approve Ms. Harris-Mohammed's request for membership in the 100.
Ms. Taylor?
I just wanted to ask, given our, to the, for the community, are we maybe, did you all, have you all submitted signatures?
I haven't, I haven't received. Have you received anything from George Wood?
Did you all really make, for the district, did you all make, this was something that happened in September, the outreach for the George Wood? What is it that you need?
The district activity forms, were they given to you to complete to be packed to us?
That's what I spoke to you for, in the, in the, in the, so I was called, so you just need, just the ones?
Actually be completed by four members and submitted back to us to run for. And so we, if you don't have them, we can send those to you. I thought you, they have been sent to you, but I will double check.
Okay. I was just trying to confirm that the, that we'll be checking and giving them.
What are my strategy?
To see if the form is already completed, whatever. We can just walk.
Okay.
Thank you. There's a, is that a, a second?
By Ms. Harris-Mohammed, seconded by Mr. Sternavon.
Okay.
Mr. Sternavon?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs.? Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinniels?
Yes.
Ms. Harris-Mohammed?
Oh, you get very money.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, yes, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Pinniels?
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes eight with one extension. The next item is item eight, 8.01, Approve the Message of December 14, 2015, by the board session.
Any discussion?
The motion was made by Dr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Sternavon, to approve the minutes. Mr. Sternavon?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris-Mohammed?
Yes.
The minutes, thank you. Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinniels?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item is COs.
Thank you. Two more seconds, two more minutes.
Personnel section, 2.2 dash 371181. Legal section, 2.2 dash 371187. 59, 50, as I mentioned. I move that the school board of the city of Richmond convene COs at the one discussed perspective candidates for employment and decided upon the promotion performance. Demotion salaries, discipline, and reservation of suspended public officers on the 40th of the 10th. With consideration of the resources agenda of this state's school board employees, formation contract, employee matters, 151646, 151647, 151648, 174649, or consultation with the council pertaining to actual litigation or such consultation or briefing and holding meeting that personally affect the corporation, the litigation posture of the school board, and our consultation with legal counsel contained by the school board regarding legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such councils.
Motion was made by Dr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Sternavon, to go on to flow, all in favor. As, and the extensions, do you now, closed.